Good evening, all. It's six o'clock. As you can hear from the bell across the street, it's the time for the, this school committee meeting is called, called for in the agenda and posting for the meeting. First order of business is call to order and a pledge of allegiance. So please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, indivisible, with liberty.
Thank you. The agenda itself is approval of minutes. First superintendent's report, assistant superintendent, finance and operations reports, school committee member reports, citizens' requests, approval of the tri board budget meeting minutes, newcomers update, a capital presentation, a budget presentation, and an executive session after which we'll adjourn for the evening. So with that, anyone wish to make a motion on approval of minutes?
I would like to move to approve the minutes from November 1st, 2023.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Five zero zero. Thank you. Madam Superintendent.
All right. Thank you. Good to see all of you. It's dark and chilly in here. I apologize. Hopefully it will warm up. Thank you. Good to see you all. Last week and into this week continued with a lot of good activity across the district. We had the finalization of Kindness Week. There was a whole variety of things that happened across the community. The Veterans Clothing Drive and collection of, lot of food pantry events, as well as then special opportunities for people to do activities at the school level across the district pre-K to 22 was a huge success. And we plugged in just as part of like also a wide array of community events. But I just want to give a shout out to the buildings and to everybody who participated. I got a lot of photos and updates from students and from events at the building all week. And I think it was very, very successful. Additionally, the Good Scout Ceremony, which is a town event, but a really celebration of community service, was very well attended last week. And the Lanines, Bill and Bev Laney were honored as people who do a lot of amazing community service and their work in our community. It was really wonderful to see them honored. I'm going to thank people who took time to attend that. And then I went, last week was at the MAS C conference. And I think Steve will probably talk about that, the branch of that work. But that's a robust, busy conference, which is the Mass School Committee Conference and always well attended with a series of informational and training workshops. It was a good, good conference. I did, I did, I was able to attend a few things. I also was able to do a lot of budget work. So, you know, with the need of working remotely, some of the budget processes is moving more slowly. And so she and I were trying to carve out time. And so it was kind of nice to be able to do both. I was down there, but also able to spend some time working. And other than that, I think we've kind of moved through the time change and kids and faculty have stabilized again. Like that always throws us off a little bit in the beginning. And I think now, you know, again, the, the activities are pounding away. We have Bandarama tonight. And I just want to give a celebration to an amazing concert that was held last night at the high school. It was about an hour long. And it was the culmination of a residency of a very well-known violinist, violinist, a concert violinist, Vijay Gupta. And I can't pull the name of the woman that sang with him. Also amazing. And they did a joint performance where our students had been working with them in study across several workshops, which were very, very impressive. And so there was a combination of orchestra music, singing, and then Vijay also played and there was singing. It was just amazing. It was, it was really wonderful. When you see the level of talent that our students bring to this work and to be able to have a really a high-level professional come in and really recognize and tutor the work of our, our students, it was, it was quite a moment. Very well attended. And I just think a real celebration, I want to give a shout out to the Fine Arts Department, the Music Department in particular, along with Chris Martin for organizing that. It was really spectacular. If you, if you have a chance, Westboro TV did film it. I think they will probably release it. It is well, it is well worth taking some time to view. So a highlight last night, I was also able to attend the Borough Sugar Shack, had their celebration of their five years of successful business work. We had state reps there. We had original members. We had original fundraisers. We had people that came and helped us get off the ground five years ago. We had an opportunity to have the store open and all of the young adult workers there really presented all of our product lines and gave tours. It was really a great night. So again, lots of meaningful work taking place. And I have in future work, I just blocked it out with Director Sheri Stevens, looking towards starting a conversation with you around the renovation of the basement, which we talked about years ago when we came into the space, thinking that in our future we would look to as the program expands and the needs of the store. So we've reached that point, which is again, very exciting, kind of on the eve of, of five years of operation. And so she and I are starting to develop a presentation to bring forward to you. But just a real moment for a thank you for the amount of work that, that many of you, I know Steve was here at the time, contributed to bringing that to fruition in our community. And now at this point, several communities who came to us and used the model to springboard developing their own models successfully. So not only have we been able to successfully provide a high-end program for Westboro families, we've also then been able to support Grafton, Shrewsbury, and several, and Hawkington, and other communities who have come to find ways to kind of replicate the model. And I just, I think that's a huge celebration for, for an aspect of our work. So lots of good news and it's wonderful to be here tonight. And that's my report.
Daniel?
Nothing to report tonight.
There she is. Go ahead.
Yeah, we have a lot of exciting activities, especially tonight with Bandarama. And then our volleyball team is playing in the semifinals tonight at Worcester North High School against...
Oh, that's so amazing.
Another team.
Another team.
I'll probably get a text from Roger or something. That's okay. We can, we'll name the state finals and who they're playing against, right?
Hopefully they'll win. They got this.
Nothing to report?
Kristin? I just want to remind everyone that the 10th Annual Turkey Trot is this Saturday, November 18th, starts at 9:00 a.m. And there's a kids fun run at 10:00 a.m. And just a reminder to the community that the road in front of the high school will be briefly closed, usually right around nine, from nine to like 9:15. So might want to avoid the traffic there. And then on November 28th, so right when we get back from Thanksgiving, Square One presents Screenagers. So it's the second Screenagers film. It's a follow-up to the original one. And that will also feature an expert panel speaking after the, after the film. Thank you.
And there was a great attendance at the last one. And I think you don't, just a note to that, if you're listening to Kristin's message there, you don't have to have done the first one to, to jump into the second one. And I think that people should feel free to add in. And the content of that is really meaningful, just to give you family support as you think about managing technologies with your family. And the, the thing that's nice about it, it's like an hour. It's like it there, it's a tight presentation so that you can do both the talk afterwards and the movie. So really good news to see that so well attended.
Yeah. And I think they're also scheduling some follow-up discussions. So if people left there with like questions or concerns, there's follow-up gatherings, I think at the library where people can just gather and talk about the issues that the film raised. So, thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, I just have a couple announcements, both of them special education related. If any parents or caregivers of children who are on IEPs are interested in being interviewed for the tiered focus monitoring program run by DESI, please reach out to me at either my email here at the school committee or through the CPAC page or Facebook page as well. And then CPAC will be hosting Leslie Leslie, who is the founder of Westboro CPAC and is now with the Federation for Children of Special Needs. She'll be hosting or putting on a workshop here in town on December 12th. So more details will be forthcoming, but I wanted to put that out on the radar.
Sarah?
Nothing to report tonight.
I don't have much, but I do have something that is, I think, interesting to not only the school committee, but also to the town. A number of years ago, we had a engineering company do a review of the facilities in town in terms of things that we needed to improve, upgrade, replace. And so that now is pretty much done. And most of the things that were recommended in that report have been brought forward to the town for action. As a result of, in effect, completing that first report, we went out to bid for a company to duplicate that report going forward. And it's now reached the school committee for review to determine other things that, from an engineering point of view, have been reviewed and recommended for whatever repair or replacement going forward. We got a lot of mileage out of that previous report and hopefully we'll do as well with this one. So with that, we can move to citizens' requests. Kristin?
Sure. So before we have speakers, I'll just remind everyone of our policy. You must be a current resident of Westboro. Speakers can address the school committee about issues within the school committee's purview and authority. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to the school committee. And written comments longer than three minutes can be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. So you're welcome to hand the chair additional comments tonight or send them via email. The chair will make sure that the comments are shared with other school committee members. Public comment by residents at this meeting is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Our role is to listen carefully to what you have to share with us. Clapping, cheering, calling out, or any other noise during or following a speaker is not allowed. At the close of citizens' requests, school administrators may address what was shared by the speakers if they wish to do so. Additional individual follow-up with a speaker may also take place in the days and weeks following a school committee. And we just ask that when you come forward, you state your full name and your street address and speak directly into the microphone.
If I could see a show of hands, who would like to speak to us tonight? Okay, the plan would be we'll move from front to back and from my left to right in, in the people who have responded. So with that, Mr. Conklin.
Boyd Conklin, 8 Water Street. Hello groomers. It is abusive for any adult, especially a child's own parents, to subject their children to overtly debased sexual content. Such parents deserve to be publicly shamed and ostracized from civil society. Groomer story trime, drag queens at the Senior Center for Middle and High Schoolers, hyper-sexualized lady-faced clown. The schools refuse to label what they are teaching as CRT, but their actions are lockstep with the Marxist formula of utopia, advocacy, structural critique, and enlisting students as their foot soldiers in their war on manufactured wrongs. White supremacist, we saw Tennessee take out some crackers. Oppressed and oppressors, Marxist worldview versus individual merit instead of group identity. We shouldn't hurt people's feelings. Well, you can if people's feelings are wrong. If you don't like the facts, don't change the facts, change the feelings. Going for total control, asserting a worldwide dominance so they have the authority to say yes or no, which is totally alien to the English-speaking experience. We're used to there being a strong division between the state and society and saying society is pluralistic. We all can pursue our own domains to see them thrive or wither. It's meant to be a free society. Criticism by me of you and by you of me is our right. That's what pluralistic society actually looks like. That is, of course, not what you are part of creating. Everyone can see that there is a network of power that is above the national level at this point, an international network of power that is uniparty. And it wants to have complete managerial control of the society, down to everything that you do from every level. It wants that and is trying to get it. I understand why you go along. If you don't, you will be personally destroyed. You will lose your job. Your bank accounts will be closed. Right-wing extremist domestic terrorist moniker will be on you. Daniel Mayer, response to critical race theory indoctrination in Westboro schools, classic whips out the UN Agenda 2030. Yes, Westboro Schools is just taking orders, rubber stamping the narrative, the path of least resistance. You would have the dissenters routed out of our own civilization. You will see what we have done by virtue. You, you'll look at the vice that you have been spreading. You must take all in the name of the soupe de jour. When one premise wears thin, there is always another waiting in the wings. You are wrong and you are evil. You seem afraid. A cruel exercise of power is a sign of weakness rather than strength. You should be able to persuade for moral legitimacy. Thank you very much. Thank you, Boyd.
Beth Zerper, 1 Denny Street. The topic is pronoun choice and display of the pride flag in the Mill Pond School. Our elementary school children are presented sexual topics which are unfit for their age. Prepubescent students without sexual education foundations are inundated with adult topics and imagery. It is not the role of the school to present a philosophy of gender identity, choice, sexual attraction, and methods of sexual intercourse. Well-intentioned teachers elicit children's preferred pronouns in order to demonstrate acceptance. They proudly display proud pride flags on their person and classroom walls. Some are of the opinion that the teacher's actions are fostering acceptance and inclusion, teaching our children the fundamental, fundamental principles of the golden rule. I do not find their hearts to be in the wrong place, only their topics and methods. The topic of pronoun selection and gender identity is a nationwide matter of public debate. Asking a 10-year-old their pronouns is openly asking them to question and/or affirm their gender. It presents the understanding that they have the choice to either accept or deny their gender. Based on their choice, they display their expression through the use of pronouns and the enforcement of that usage amongst others. This topic then establishes a pathway toward escalation into gender affirmation procedures and gender transmission. It is not the role of the school to open topics which have pathways to irreversible medical procedures. Every fifth grade classroom in the Mill Pond displays a version of a pride flag. How could anyone accurately explain pride flag symbolism to a child in a non-sexual manner? Each of the shapes and colors represent a particular form of sexual behavior and/or identity. A teacher may substitute the notion of love in exchange for intercourse to be vague and somewhat age-appropriate. This is disingenuous to the foundation of the image and to the child. A prepubescent child who has not yet received sexual education is ill-equipped to understand the basic sexual intricacies of the pride flag. It is also not the role of the school to accurately educate them. As a parent, I expect all conversations related to intercourse and attraction outside of official sex education curriculum to fall in my domain. The display of pride flags to elementary school children's children is by definition not age-appropriate dialogue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next? Please come up.
Hi, Sarah McCabe, 28 Mill Road. I want to start by saying that although I have two children in the Westboro school system, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my professional experience. I'm the CEO of a large youth mental health agency in Metro West that has been there for 47 years. Many of our clients are youth in the Westboro school system. The timing of this felt necessary, given that it is Transgender Awareness Week, followed by Transgender Day of Remembrance on Monday. I don't need to insult you with obscure statistics from questionable sources or doctors in Finland. I can speak on behalf of my own experiences as a mental health expert and the 15,000 children we have provided services to just in the last decade. I know firsthand that youth who identify as LGBTQ are four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers. This is not because they are gay or trans. This is due to the mistreatment and discrimination they experience as a result. Within the LGBTQ community, those who identify as trans are at the highest risk of depression, running away, becoming trafficked, and attempting and/or completing suicide. They also experience significantly higher rates of violence. Sixty-two transgender people were killed last year for no other reason other than hatred. That number is likely underreported due to misgendering. That is what Monday is about, honoring the lives lost each year due to anti-transgender violence. So what does this have to do with the Westboro School Committee? Well, as somebody who provides services to children in this community, I know the drastic decrease in all of those statistics when a trans or non-binary youth has at least one supportive and affirming adult in their life. When they have a school or a community that is supportive and affirming, then their risk is no greater than that of their cisgender peer. In all of my years in this field, I have no cases of straight or cisgender youth being negatively impacted from being in environments that are supportive to their gay or trans peers, including school environments that have pride flags. If I had to hypothesize here, it would be that these youth are experiencing a conflict between harmful messages that they hear at home and the inclusive community where they attend school. That's not a reason to change the school environment. Westboro owes it to the kids of this community to keep moving forward, keep leaning in, and making progress. We can't go backwards because of the fears of a few, no matter how loud they are. So in closing, because of the safe and inclusive environments you are building within these schools, as a professional, I can assuredly say that the school committee is not grooming children. What you are doing is saving lives. And for that, I thank you.
Paula Matthew, 20 Andrews Road. I must admit that I was taken aback by the realization that this school system... I must admit that I was taken aback by the realization that this school system has so blindly adopted the UN Sustainable Development Goals as part of their curriculum objectives. Actually, my initial reaction to this bit of news was an aha moment. Your admission not only further justifies our concerns, but proves beyond any doubt that something so un-American has permeated our schools. In June of 2019, the UN partnered with the World Economic Forum to advance the implementation of Agenda 2030. Perhaps you're not aware of it, but the WEF is the organization pushing the Great Reset on society, where they're predicting you will own nothing and you will be happy. Consider the concepts of smart cities, 24-hour surveillance, and social credit system. Consider China, because that's where we're headed. SDG looks good on paper, but as one observer said, you will own nothing and be happy. But what they don't tell you is they will own everything, maybe even you, and they will be happier. Who are they? Corporations, technocrats, and government, entities that don't have the best interests of the people at heart. This country was founded on individual freedoms and ownership. Flawed in its failure to take into account human nature, this prediction of ownerless future would not be happy for us as individuals. So say goodbye to individual freedoms and welcome in the New World Order, a collective society. Forget about shooting from the moon. With this indoctrination taking place in our schools, our children will be ill-equipped to understand and to take a stand against these enemies of freedom and will potentially find themselves slaves in a global world. By adopting this agenda, we are complicit in the destruction of this country and its freedoms. Let's stop it now before it's too late. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, so Mike Noonan for Rosewood Place, back again to talk about the Global Studies course that we have talked about in the last several meetings. We had expressed concern several weeks ago that this course is a deceptively-named platform that's being used to push indoctrination on our students. We appreciate the fact that the administration has responded to this, but what we've heard really hasn't dispelled our concerns. I think what we've heard is that while there's biased material being taught, it's offset by non-biased material that's being taught elsewhere in that class or in other classes. To us, that doesn't really address the issue. And Amber, I think you had mentioned a couple of weeks ago that the curriculum is complex. Daniel, you had sent me an email a few weeks ago saying that you were essentially handling it, and we appreciate that, but the net effect has been to sort of say to us as parents, there's nothing to see here, move along. Daniel, you had also presented a slide a couple of weeks ago, was the UN Sustainability Framework, and again, as Paula mentioned, I'm not sure that the UN is essentially or exactly a credible organization at this point. But that sustainability framework didn't answer the question of what's being taught in Global Studies. I showed it to both of my kids, both of whom took that class, and they basically said that no more than half of what was in that framework is actually taught in Global Studies. So we're not learning anything about the actual material that's being taught. We have a pile of material that parents like me and like others have gathered, including one parent who actually pulled their child out of the Westboro school system because they were concerned about some of this material. It's all indoctrination. It's all sort of in the same ilk. Global, I'm sorry, Ghost Boys is a fiction book that was used in that class, and as I mentioned several weeks ago, that book was essentially imparting the message to our kids that the police are bad or systemically racist. The book is a fiction book, so there's no nonfiction, and I think that was the other thing that we heard, is that this class is being used to teach nonfiction. There's no nonfiction. It's either fiction or it's bias. It's either fiction or it's propaganda. And again, we're still not getting the answer as to the sum total of what's being taught. And I'm going to be back in two weeks talking about another pile of indoctrination that's happening in another one of my kids' classes in a different subject. There was even mention a couple of weeks ago of the fact that a detective has been coming to Global Studies. That detective is coming to that class because my wife suggested it, because the kids, again, were concerned, and there was concern on the part of parents, that kids were getting the wrong impressions about the police. And it's almost as if we're being gaslighted here. It's almost as if we're being talked past and not being listened to. I mentioned this several weeks ago. The fact was that my wife made that suggestion. So all the evidence that we have here so far, and I hate to keep coming back to Global Studies, you know, over and over again, week after week, but we're left with the conclusion again, that this class is being used as a platform for indoctrination. And it's not the only class. There's several of them out there that we're aware of and many that we're probably not aware of. And the question is, are you going to do something about it? Or are you guys on board with this? This is something that you want, that you're backing?
Your time is up, sir.
And those are the answers we're looking for.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi, Susan Reynolds, 50 Upton Road. I'm back here again, maybe a little less prepared than I would like, but there's so many topics going on in my head that I'm just trying to make sense of a lot of them. I was first back here in May when I looked at the mentoring program that was being offered for children who were in the LGBTQ plus community, and they were looking for mentors to help in that community. And I do feel that there are definitely a number of people that need that. However, I looked at some numbers, and it looks like we, I'm not sure of the numbers, so I'd like to verify the numbers, and I can send an email to follow up. But the town does fill out a mass.gov document. It's the enrollment data, and it looks like in the first year we started giving the non-binary student numbers was in 2021, and we've done it for the last three years. So in 2021, we had two students listed as non-binary, 2 in 21, 22, and 6 in 22, 23. They were all in the high school, except for 2023, we had one at Gibbons. So I started thinking about non-binary, not male, they don't recognize us being either a male or a female. And so I'm trying to figure out, you know, what are the other numbers? If a boy identifies as a girl, is he accounted as a female or is he counted as a male? So these are interesting numbers, and I'm sure there's other sources out there that I have not learned about, but I'm just trying to get a feel for the scope. This is a lot of discussions going on in town in terms of how big the problem is. You know, you hear about books and banning books, and no one really wants to ban books, but we do, we have always rated movies. We have always, you never put your child in front of an X-rated movie, you know? And we have different school levels. Things may be appropriate at different levels, but there's still things you don't want your high schooler to see and/or potentially read or see on the internet, and there's certainly been parental guidance in many of those areas. So who actually has got the discretion in the school libraries to make sure that a student is checking out a book that's age-appropriate? I mean, I think a parent's trust has to be in the fact that they can't just walk in and do something that they don't consider age-appropriate. So I sometimes feel, you know, this is, there's been some harms coming along most recently, and children are being influenced. Maybe they're not being groomed, but they are being influenced by many, many sources, including the schools. I think the schools can be influencers, their fellow students, families, all of those are influencers. And I do believe that there are harms. I wonder, sometimes we need to follow the money and just see, you know, what are some of the funding sources. So I may be back again because I'm just interested in seeing, you know, how things have changed so quickly, so fast, because it was not like that just 10, 15 years ago, and there seems to be a big swing. So I'm very interested in learning more, and I'll see you all again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. With that, citizens' request is closed. The next item on the agenda, excuse me, is there any response that the administration would like to offer?
I mean, I think we've talked to the issues several times. I do, I mean, I'm surprised that it's un-American to talk about the United Nations, but, I mean, we can, you know, have conversations about that offline.
I think I'm comfortable moving on tonight. I appreciate the feedback. We're gathering it, we're listening. I don't have any specific comments tonight, some of which we've already covered, and a couple of the data pieces, I don't think we could answer right now. I mean, Sue's questions, I don't have, we'd have to, I'd have to understand with clarity. If you want to email me, you had talked about that, just if you want to email me the questions about the numbers you're, so I can follow correctly what you want, just send me a follow-up email. So I was saying, if somebody has a data question, it's better if I get it in an email. I don't, like, I don't have stats, so, you know, I think from that standpoint, I'd rather have a follow-up email, and I think for now, I'm comfortable if we move into the remainder of the agenda.
Okeydoke. The next item on our agenda is approval of the tri-board budget meeting minutes. Is there a motion for that?
Yes, I can make a motion to approve the tri-board meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Well, second.
Is there discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor? Aye. Five zero zero. Okay, newcomers update.
So this is the first, like, of three important presentations we cover between now and the end of the evening. So the first is, and I've updated you on several occasions, around the fact that, and the memo attached outlines it, and, you know, if you want to open that up. Over the past year, we have provided a series of updates to you on both numbers and changes in the situation of homelessness and the impact to Massachusetts, to the nation, to changes in issues with regard to sustainable housing for families. And we have seen a growth in Westboro of families seeking shelter-based housing. We, because we are the public school system, are then a participant in making sure that those students are schooled in Westboro, just to recap, pieces that I've shared with you as we've moved forward. I went ahead and placed into an organized kind of update for you a couple of key things, and I want to be clear that at this time, I'm finding program changes and enhancements necessary, which I foreshadowed to you, which is, as we had families join us, as we had unanticipated student needs arrive, we would begin looking to those that flow typically into school programming and school classrooms effectively, and if we need to provide any additional scaffolds, either additional language supports or additional program supports. So now that we have understanding of the needs of a range of students, we are developing a program to support their successful transition to school. This is important to ensure that faculty are not overloaded with new student demands and that they would be able to then have an impacted ability to serve all Westboro students at the level of expectations that we provide. You, as a school committee, are charged, as am I, with making sure that we have a strong program in place for every student, and the impact of additional unanticipated program needs are important to compensate for. We've done some interesting research and have met with multiple other districts, and they have gone through some of the same process, to begin to think about the structured program needs necessary for a full array of families seeking shelter housing. And again, I want to be clear that those, you can't categorize, their housing needs are similar, but they're individual families. Stories are individual, the needs are individual. We've had many students who've been able to transition, have moved from a once-stable school district, lost housing, can't stabilize new housing, are now coming in and they're flowing into our classrooms. We also have a proportion of students who are displaced from other places, other nations, who have had issues in transition related to trauma, and those students have both fragmented schooling, they have had, and we have some that have had no schooling, and students with language needs. So you have a small percentage of the families that we have greeted into Westboro who require a stable amount of really strong intervention programming so that they can then move into public school at a rate that is able to ensure their success. So, and doesn't place stress on the classroom in a way that would inhibit making sure that we can move all students forward effectively. So in looking at that, I just want to call out a couple of highlights and let you know how I'm planning to move forward, and I'm seeking your approval and also providing an update to you. The vast majority of this, I'm anchoring through targeted grant fundings that are coming to us through the state for this work. So at this time, the updated program that I'm planning, working with multiple people in-house, we will be accessing one grant and potentially another that we're applying for right now. Currently, we have a grant, 344 grant, which is state funding, which was provided starting at the close of last year and into this year, and that we have maintained a total on that grant of 222,000. 75,000 of that needs to be moved to targeted transportation, and I think I had updated on you that before. We own shared transportation for students who are placed into shelters, who opt to still maintain. McKinney-Vento's law allows them to return to their home school and be schooled there. So there's a range of families who are housed in Westboro, who are actually, we're sharing transportation costs where they go to their home, their past home neighborhood for schooling. So there's $75,000 of that state funding targeted to support some, but not all, of that transportation cost, all right? The remaining funds I'm going to use to direct to targeting the development of a newcomers' program K to three. That is where we're finding the most intensive immediate need, where we have a small number between three to six students requiring really intensive transitional programming. These are students with substantial trauma and language and broken schooling, and given that they need a specialized small setting for us to stabilize and begin transitioning them into stable public education. To fund that program, we're going to target it as leanly but as well-staffed as we need to, to be successful. We've posted for a bilingual teacher. We've posted for two bilingual transition and paraeducators and a bilingual social worker, school counselor, BCBA background, behavioral intervention. That group of people will stabilize that program and bring those students in to be able to start to develop their school-ready and stabilization. Should we be very, very successful in that, where to, like, stabilize those students and they move into regular programming? We would transition those services across districts through the remainder of the year, targeted as ready to provide ongoing support to the number of families we've had come in that do require bilingual support. I mean, right now, we're actively seeking these positions to fill them. They aren't easily found or filled. There's high demand for this across the state, just as there is for housing. So, you know, there's a lot of moving parts in this, but I'm certainly hopeful to be successful in anchoring staff to develop this program. The high school also has a need for one bilingual teacher, given that we've had, and you can see I provided the number down here for you, and I think it's interesting data as you look at the fact that last year at this time, similarly, when I presented the budget to you, when we were developing the budget, we had 54 L students at the high school. They weren't heavily at the low end of entry in language, so we were, with three FTE, we were successfully programming those students into stable, successful high school. By the end of the year, I had 54 students and currently enrolled, to date, we have 66. Of the 66 students, there's just some important data to note. 36 of those 66 are Level 1 or 2, which is really either no language, beginning language, or just beginning to develop language. 26 of the 36 are Level 1s. That's a very high-intensive need. I think it's also important to note that these are not newcomers, these are residents. So these are established residents. So these are established residents in Westboro. Only one of that group is a newcomer, which means they've entered and have non-stable housing or in sheltering. These others are in, you know, Westboro housing and will be with us permanently. So I think it's important that we look at the three full-time people we have at the high school, have really heavy caseloads, but what we need to establish is a new SLIF classroom, which is the terminology for the sheltered language immersion program, so we can take those students and provide intensive English language instruction to them, to stabilize their language skills as quickly as possible, to manage their fragmentation of schooling, and then jettison them successfully into the high school. They then move into language levels three and four. We have an incredibly successful, and I just want to give a shout-out to the L program in our district of supporting a wide array of students across language development, who then move into the high school, thrive and contribute to our performance numbers being solid as they are. So, at this time, you're looking at two intervention spots. You're looking at intervention at the K-three level for a newcomer program. We drew from three other communities who are actively either have a program or are developing a program right now, and designed the Westboro model that we felt would be most effective for our needs. Interestingly, some larger communities, much, much larger communities than ours, have ongoing stabilization newcomer programs as a branch of their L programming, outside of whether or not it's non-stable housing. We don't deliver service that way. We've really put, done push-in models, and students move quickly, but we were able to learn from their programming and do some modeling and pull to a place to where we feel like this is a good program intervention. And then, to end the conversation, I provided for you the actual data you can see in just the tables, as a snapshot, so you can see the array of students, where they're, where they've come into district, and the current impact, all right? I think that's a good plan. I guess at this point, it's, you know, we're covering the vast majority of this as of now. The newcomer program, I anticipate, will be covered by the remainder of, or at least a good portion of it, by the 344 grant, and I, I will return with an update when the programs are staffed, with an update on the addition of the other grant that we're currently applying for. I'll provide funding offsets for you, so you can see anything where we would be looking to make budget adjustments as needed in this current year to cover any of that other staffing. Sorry, that was a long discussion, but it's complex. So I guess I would open it up to any discussion or questions.
One question. The Level One and Two, could you speak to that? What are those levels, and how many levels are there?
Sure. There are four language levels until students reach competency of independence. When you have students at...
Five.
Five, sorry. Thank you. And, and when they reach Level Three, typically, they're programming out into their regular schedule, but they have still some targeted monitoring and support to make sure that they're accessing the curriculum and that the language, aspects of the language don't slow them down. And then, by the time you get beyond that, you move into what they call a FLEP, which is basically that you're out of the language program, you're independent, but we don't take our eye off you. We make sure that you're continuing to make progress, and they still screen and monitor those students. One and Two, you're at either no language or really emergent language.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. One is, I'm just trying to understand, in terms of the grant funding, you have, are the grants for, what was it?
It's a 344 grant.
344.
Yeah.
Is that for just McKinney-Vento, in terms of how is that classified? And what is, my understanding of McKinney-Vento is just essentially homelessness, and we're saying that we've got 10 kids who are not, but they're, they're not McKinney-Vento, but they're in hotels?
So, so the number that the program numbers are based on is the 40 students who fall within McKinney-Vento. However, in working on our program needs to make sure that we're tracking where all our students are, we do have some self-placed families who have lost housing, who haven't claimed homelessness, but are in our hotels. So they're kind of bridging, you know? So currently, Karen Bunton is tracking, just a knowledgeable working, understanding that these are families who are currently housing in hotels, haven't claimed homelessness, haven't asked for sheltering, they're paying for living in those hotels, personal choice, and within their, their family decision. However, there's a fragileness to that, that we're, that she's tracking in terms of just kind of keeping track of it. The 40 is what I'm basing all of our program discussions on. Those fall under McKinney-Vento, where they have lost housing, have claimed homelessness, arrived without any housing, and fall within that 40. So the program needs that we're discussing, she had showed it to me, and I continued, I considered, like, zeroing it out, but I included it in the table for you to see. I just think it's informational, to know that you still have people that are, you know, kind of like managing family structures, but living with some fragile circumstances that can be stressful. And the McKinney-Vento is very much classified around the homelessness parameters, okay? The grant, do you want me to explain the grant?
Yep.
So the grant is currently the state grant that was put in place, it's a new, that's new, last year and this year, specifically put in place to support the escalation of the number of families that have been displaced, and the increase in the homelessness and sheltering needs that the state was seeing, and then working to provide some additional funds, mostly because they saw the escalation of the numbers around the transportation needs, right?
Right.
And then also then, the impact to the amount of programming, such as, you know, we're delineating here for you tonight. So if you're a community that has no Ls, and you have, and you have a change, there were some districts that had no internalized programming, so their absorption rate required kind of an immediate intervention of budget funds. So the, this grant kind of, you know, worked for them very quickly. We held those funds initially because most of the early arrivals for us, when, when the newcomers' numbers were low, we already had stabilized programming in place, and we folded them into that. And then, our need has now grown to a place where it kind of out-tapped that capacity, and now we're looking at this specialized program. But that is a state grant, specifically just over the last two years, that came, came from the state, specifically for the increases we were seeing.
And that was allocated as it's reported here, right?
Yes.
Where FY '23, that's how much was provided?
Yeah.
Okay. That answers that question. The other question is, and I think I may have either missed this in what you were talking about, but, so forgive me if it's a very silly question.
Oh, it's okay. I was covering a lot of stuff.
I'm trying to understand, you've referred to some of these not being newcomers, right?
You're talking about the high school.
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, so let me, let me come down, so I broke it into two. Yeah, all of the discussion of the upper program need for the newcomers program, the K-three program, all based upon our, our, our newcomers, and could be short or long-term. You really, you know, there's a, there's an instability to this, which is why we waited as long as we could, because those families could be placed elsewhere, they could transition again. But now, given where we are with the level of home instability and housing instability, anybody placed with us, clearly they've said is going to be with us at least for the year. So, so because of that, you know, it's kind of like, the program development now becomes more relevant, okay? It's not like you think. We, we had this family, they were here for three weeks, they were here for three months, and then they got stable housing somewhere. That's how McKinney-Vento worked for years. You'd have a small number, it was never on your radar, because it didn't need to be. You'd have a small number of families you were housing through McKinney-Vento, they were in our schools, they transitioned out after several months when they moved to some form of stable housing. All of that has fallen apart across the state. So now they have people housed in this unstable housing model with nowhere else to go. So the state has been clear that these families that are housed here are not going to bump out of here anytime soon, and that school districts should plan for them to be here all year. And the state responded by then anchoring in with these funding grants to say, this is now a burden that is in place that will stay, that all, many communities are facing, and, you know, didn't budget for. So the state responded with these additional funds. At the high school, the increase in need, which was just the arrival of unanticipated students. And that can happen. That's happened to us before. Typically, in a year like that, I might pull from a grant, another grant, Daniel would pull from his Title III grant, we would work something out, and we would bring a teacher in, and then budget for them moving forward in the following year if we needed it to. But right now, given the amount of, like, demand and the amount of things going on, this is kind of like all hitting at once, and I don't have another grant reference yet, but I need to pose for that position, because that's a lot of kids. So I'm, I'm bringing it to you now, indicating that as of right now, I believe we can fund the newcomers program using the budget funds that were given to us through the grant, sorry, the grant funds. And the FTE for the high school coverage, I've posted it, and we're looking for alternative funding sources and offsets to pay for between now and the remainder of the year, because we can't, we can't wait. I can't, I can't have these kids just kind of hovering. They really need very targeted intervention.
But technically, those funds are for McKinney-Vento, so you'd have to, I mean, you have seven kids that fall under that at the high school, so you'd have, I mean...
But they're not requiring the SLIF programming that I'm, that I'm indicating for you. Like, of those, we have, we have a, we have an umbrella of students who might come in that are McKinney-Vento, but their language needs, they might not need any language, they're just, they, they might have come from Boston and moved here because they've been displaced. Not every number of this 40 have language needs or academic needs, they're just, they're, they've been displaced. So, you know, of the seven, I'm looking at your number, there are seven students that fall there, who, what their needs are are individual, they're just displaced housing, all right? At the high school, however, we then saw between last year when we budgeted and now, a change in our L population that's targeting these 66 students that are really high need in terms of their language needs. And that's why I'm bringing it to you to indicate that we're going to need to add a staff.
Okay. Last question, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I just want to make sure I'm trying to be helpful.
No, you are. At least for me.
Keep going.
Sorry. So Hastings, seems like it has the largest number of, of non-MKinney-Ventos. So, and this, this newcomer program is going to help to absorb these, because you're saying that when, the funding that you're using for the newcomer program, and the way that it's being laid out is specifically for the McKinney-Vento. So are these all students, like, these 10 students that you're talking about that are non-Mkinney-Ventos, are we going to be needing, I mean, are they all going to be absorbed into this?
Into...
So, I mean, you're saying they're being tracked, they're not officially residents? They're staying in hotels?
Well, they are, it is considered legal residency, so they are residents, they're simply choosing to pay their rent at a hotel. Think about it like that. So a family that moves to a hotel, and they move in there, if they wanted to make that their permanent house, they could. And so right now, I have, but they're, but they're somewhat, somewhat unstable, and that way, she's tracking it right now, because she has a lot to track, okay? There's a lot going on over there. So we're just trying to sort it all out. That's how she sorts it out. I apologize if I'm confusing you. I could just take those out.
No, no, no.
Look at the 40.
Sorry to ask.
Think about the families, and, and those are the ones that, you know, again, I think the vast majority of, currently, you can see that, you know, there's always a giant volatility in the market of our kids moving and coming and going. We have targeted funding arriving for the needs of these non-sheltered families, and the, and the area of the most intensive discussion is that we have three to six very young kids who have trauma-based needs, where we need to have a targeted program, period, and that's happening up above. And the ones down below, the high school number around the students, you can see, of all of the discussion of the high school kids, only one of those is participating in the discussion above. None of them are in that 40, just one. It's just a growth in the population, unanticipated, which can happen. It happened in Sped two years ago, and we ended up needing to seek additional funding, you know? Typically, we can always program for students within, like, I could have made it two memos, like, one is about our newcomer family, one is about the fact that we have this change in the structure of the L needs at the high school. I packaged them together, because I'm basically telling you I'm going to be doing hiring. Some covered by a grant. This one at the high school, working on where I'm going to pay for that, I'll be making the cuts necessary or funding allocations. I'm confident we can manage it, but I, I'm not comfortable not adding staff at the high school to manage setting up a SLIF class for the 36 kids that require intensive language up there.
I guess I'd just like to comment, because this discussion is very complicated in terms of changes in the system, where the money comes from, whether the state kicks in, et cetera. But if you just do the simple math, which is, our budget's 64 million, we have 4,050 kids in the system, that means it costs the town of Westboro $15,800 a head, which is, historically, is comparable to what goes on in the, in other places, but the bottom line is, if you multiply 15, 8 by 66 new kids, we're talking another million, $50,000 to the budget, which is, in effect, happening as a result of pressures caused by state politics, rather than, let's say, the normal growth of the town. Therefore, I think the bottom line on this discussion is simply, we need to get as much state support for these specific issues as possible, and I think we'll all do that.
Well, typically too, and again, I think it is a complex conversation, you guys are tracking beautifully on it, by the way, and I appreciate that. You know, I think we, we have really well-developed programs here. Our student performance numbers remain very high, and the success of our students with graduation rate, leaving the high school, well, you know, well-educated and successful, very, very high. And typically, the coming and going of all the students in the district just flow during the year, and we're able to manage it. Every once in a while, we get a swing and a change in a population. At the high school, they were carrying three FTE, and the, and the, and the types of L students they needed to service were kind of hovering in the three and four level need, like, some language, but need some support. We can get them into class, bolster them, and then get them moving. But then they had this shift, unanticipated, where when they looked at the L population living in the community, that the population had moved around, and they have this chunk of students who really require more intentional support. You know, I think, I imagine that, Letitia will then provide a thoughtful budget update, you know, moving forward in the future, when she does her report, probably in February, to you. She'll give a more comprehensive picture of where we are. This is kind of like crisis staffing update intervention. Anytime we make an unanticipated staffing change, we bring it to you to keep you updated. And then I'll help you track, as we move forward, any of the funding allocation gaps and how we manage them. I think, you know, I'm hopeful we can find the staffing, you know? That's the thing. You're looking now for basically four bilingual talented people in November. So, you know, we are an advantageous place to come, and people want to work in Westboro, but, you know, what I would say is, if you would like to look at all of it again, and we can, just email me, I would love to, like, talk further about it, so that I can untangle any, you know, confusion I might have created in how I presented it to you. But I think, walk back through it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to talk to any of you, like, you can just follow up with me, sir, and we can sit and look at it in depth. I think it's just, I think it's, you're just identifying all the complexities of it, which I appreciate, and I can, like, line them up for you and make sure if you have any questions that are kind of lingering, we can go through them.
Very good. Thank you.
So...
One thing, I guess I would add to what I said about the cost, is that there are two things for sure, and that is that the, the need is there not only for us, but for every other community in the Commonwealth looking for exactly the same people. So your comment about the availability of people to do this is, is cogent, and lastly, the level of performance that we need to help the kids get to the level that they should be is likely to be more expensive than average. So...
Yes.
We'll see how it goes.
I just, I want to, I'm just acknowledge what dynamic programming we're providing in this district. When you see the level of just kind of the changing dynamic of the student population, you know, it comes and goes during the year, and we managed to keep our, our performance numbers very stable, and our students moving into high-performing classrooms and having opportunities to thrive. And so the reason why we've been able to maintain that so successfully is with your support to be knowledgeable and to understand this, and to be able to support us, you know, as we move forward in this. We're fortunate that we have the state funding... We're fortunate that we have the state funding, the other grant that I'm currently applying for, when we come back, I'll give you an update on that number and the potential of it, it's a hundred and four dollars a day per student. Now, that sounds like a lot, it's not, it ends up being about another sixty thousand potentially, but it would offset the position, so, one position, so, working forward on that. Karen Button's doing a great job working with Scott Henderson to apply for that, but even just sorting the numbers so you can apply, she's arguing to maximize our, our, our opportunity for funding leverage. Um, so anyway, I appreciate the, the, on time to update you and give you a snapshot of, you know, we've been talking about it in little bits and pieces, I do believe the shelter is moving closer, the permanent shelter is moving closer to opening, so it's kind of a, a little bit of a wide-open conversation whether or not the state will stick with the plan, maybe not to backfill hotels with more families, or whether or not we'll see another jump in our number.
Um, I'd like to make a recommendation, so it's been a while since we've had our state legislatures join us, uh, for a school committee meeting. Um, so it seems like maybe we can try to schedule a time that they could come during one of our upcoming school committee, like, maybe after the first of the year.
Sure.
Um, just to visit, to give us an update on, um, where things stand in terms of funding for, um, programs like this, because we're not the only community facing this, and I know that at the state level, they're probably hearing about, you know, pushes and pulls in different areas.
Exactly.
So, um, not just, you know, funding for this, but, you know, funding for education in general and...
Yeah, no, we can definitely do that, I'll, I'll have Lynn put out an email to them and see if we could have them in for a conversation.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, they're also currently having, you can see funding conversations in the cycle at the state level, um, to figure out whether or not they're going to expand funding to open up any other, you know, sustained shelters.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. So this was a first preliminary update, we're moving forward with these postings, I'll keep you updated, I'll put together the next set of memos, I think we need to keep a trajectory of conversation about it, and then Letitia will present, we'll see if we can have our reps join us, and then if you have, again, I'm, I think, happy to do more in-depth conversation and, um, to make sure that everybody feels like they have a clear picture of where we are. Thank you.
Kelly.
Let's keep our fingers crossed we can find people, right?
I know.
Yeah, it's very complex.
So our next, uh, item on the agenda is the capital presentation. Kelly Giacopello is now the Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Ferguson retired and, uh, she moved up in the position, she now has the work, so, th- thanks, Kelly. All yours.
Well, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm really pleased to be able to present the FY twenty-five capital projects. You don't, there you go, good job. So the Westboro Public Schools Buildings and Grounds Department continues to assess and reprioritize items based upon cost and information from our, um, new long-range capital draft report completed by Russo Bar Associates. Um, sorry, I lost my place. We will share the final report later this, this year when we get it from Russo Bar, I spoke with them numerous times in the past few weeks, and we should be getting our final recall, report within the next ten days. Fingers crossed. Um, so I thought it was important for us to share our contact information, a lot of people say they don't know how to contact us, whether it be, you know, I put our mobile numbers, it's just the easiest and quickest way to get us, along with our emails. Um, in the past, they haven't really been broadcasted out there a little bit, so I think it might be nice for everyone to have them going forward. Okay, so I did put in a little blurb on the life cycle of, of capital improvement plan. Um, requirements are determined, it, it's quite a process, projects are approved, funding streams are identified, timelines are established, projects are published in our capital improvement plan. And this is all within school department and working with Kim Foster on the town side, especially with funding, um, they're, they're very helpful with that piece, and they're doing some reorganization somewhat of the capital improvement funding source, you know, looking for a threshold of maybe over a million as for debt, and then anything under could be free cash, um, but that's just very preliminary, and she shared that with me this past week. Funding streams are pretty narrowed, you know, right now, and I think they're just trying to make it easier for everyone to figure that, those pieces out. And that next one, so, our first project for FY twenty-five is the Milpon School Roof Restoration Installation. So, um, it will be on the summer, it should be on the summer project list. We are fortunate to be able to repair the roof with a restoration and have a twenty-year warranty. Having this process in place for the Milpon School saves us money as this project is estimated to cost one point one million versus a complete new roof that would be approximately three million dollars. And, you know, there's a process in seeing if you can do a restoration, they do some heat tests on the roofs, where water, um, pools, things like that, and it has to have a certain criteria to even do the restoration. So I think we're fortunate to have that for this piece.
And that is currently out to, just to compliment Kelly's work on these, you remember by process, we had the design dollars, that was bid before, it's currently out, that bid will be cracked appropriately in time to be at town meeting with the exact hard contracted number.
Right around January.
Yep.
Um, so our second project is the Hastings Elementary School ADA and MAAB project. It was a co- collaboration with GGD Engineering and Hastings Consulting, Inc. Hastings Consulting was contracted to document the existing building features that do not currently comply with the requirements of the MAAB. In this process, it was revealed that we need to modify, modify or replace some items within the school. Examples are replacing double doors in all corridors, bathroom upgrades, classroom upgrades, exterior ramps, um, and a mobile lift for the stage, which is a need. And this project could, could be a phased project, so the children can stay in the school. Um, this, uh, this is estimated to be approximately five million dollars at this time.
That also, just, I'm giving you company on this, um, is also, again, on trajectory to go out to bid in time for bids to come in with a hard number on this to be filled into the motion at town meeting. So, the trajectory of this is moving through capital, we'll be presenting these, we have a date to go to capital, Kelly and I, and present kind of an answer, questions on these. And so, after this, that'll be one of the prep pieces that she and I will be doing to make sure that we can go to them and answer questions, and Yaku will be there asking those questions. Um, and so, um, again, and we'll see where that number comes in. Additionally, you know, then, there's some other funding that's already been voted that's sitting as a package until we wait and see if we can get this completed, and we have some funding set aside for roof and other work, I think four million and change, that is available to then move into other, you know, other packaging of project work.
So our third one is the Westboro High School Exterior Rim Replacement Design. We will require engagement with an architect for the sixty-five hundred feet, square feet of aluminum metal fascia that will need to be installed as the school fascia dates back to nineteen seventy. And the concrete walls are starting to show their age, we have some crumbling of the concrete as it is porous and the moisture causes issues as it hasn't been, you know, sealed properly on a regular basis, probably, um, but the age itself determines that it's a need. We, um, the estimated, now, this is out for just design, so the estimated design cost is sixty thousand dollars, so that would be our first phase is design. So our fourth project is the Westboro High School Sea Wing Science Roof Restoration Design, so that's the roof that's closest to the football field. And that one here, we'll have to, um, also require engagement with an architect. This roof area is approximately, I'm, I'm sorry.
Seventy thousand. Third line.
So the sea roof will require engagement and architect for the design. We are fortunate to be able to repair the roof with a restoration, having the process in place for the high school sea roof saves us money as this project is estimated to cost one point six million for the, um, restoration, and a new roof would be approximately three point five million dollars if we weren't able to do the restoration. Um, estimated design cost is a hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Point that at Daniel, because that's when you vote those.
Sorry. The fifth project is the Westboro High School A and B Roof Replacement Design. We will require engagement with an architect, the roof area is approximately fifty-two years old. There are many deficiencies throughout the roof, the roof will be designed to meet current code requirements. The estimated design cost is five hundred and four thousand dollars. As we've seen with our other restoration projects and design, they, they're coming in lower, actually, much lower than the five hundred and four, but, how we came up with that number was if it was, you know, say it was the three point five to do that roof, they took a percent to come up with the design cost.
And so, I think it's useful, and we've talked about this a couple times, that the three roof packages at the high school are all being brought in together for design so that we could be advantageous to kind of do them as a package and, and manage them effectively, and to kind of keep it clear for the voters as we're coming forward to, because I think it can be confusing when we do one portion of a roof and then like, didn't we do the roof? Like, they just, you can't remember how big it is, right? And that they're all staged at different types of roof, so, I feel like it's a good comprehensive opportunity to kind of bring them forward with the design work for all of them.
I mean, especially, you know, this roof system, the A and B, um, staff has done an amazing job keeping that roof in good, good order for us, but it's, it's time to move forward with the design, for sure. Well, I had a little bit of a update that's not on there. Tony and I have been working on a few additional projects that we will research further. The first project is an assessment of the air conditioning throughout our schools. Um, the second project is an assessment for renovations of the high school bathrooms, and the third project is reviewing the updated new long-range capital plan provided by Russo Bar Associates when we get the updated from the draft.
So for tonight's purposes, what I asked Kelly to be able to do is kind of do a little foreshadowing for you, we've talked about the air conditioning, we pulled the high school air conditioner, you guys had very thoughtful conversation around, we're not doing, we're not gonna do that project till we understand the scope of all air conditioning and what is the status of our buildings. Kelly's compiling that and it's close to done, and we will bring that forward in the future. And the second being the interior redesign cycle for bathrooms, and she has the Russo Bar, kind of, she's pushing on them to give us more data. So the, so the Russo Bar reports are there for you and the capital sheets are point of reference. Um, I don't think that we'll go through them tonight, but they're, just so you can start skimming them, if you have any questions, you can forward them, she'll move to that final report, she'll complete these other two reports for you, we'll have her back, like, after we get the budget done, after we finish the capital submission for this year, we'll start doing the projections of updates for what we know about our future. So, I think it's hard to be talking about that when you're trying to figure out what's coming now, what's coming later, like, it can get very confusing. So for now, I just want her to project ahead for you, the final Russo Bar report will come out, she'll have these other two studies that we can look at, and after we get capital moved through, done by holiday, we'll bring this back probably in February, and give you a, a next deeper look at these projects as she starts to make proposals for where we might move things around based upon new data. So, um, back to Kelly for questions.
Just one question, I, I mean, maybe to Steve more or to everybody, uh, if, if the funding, suggested funding source is free cash, does it have to go to the town meeting?
Yes.
Yes, everything.
Basically, all of these things, although Kelly said different ways, there's only one way, and that's a voted town meeting to spend this kind of money. Free cash, of course, is something that's available in hand, and once it's voted by the town, you can start the process immediately. If, otherwise, it's, it's a borrow, it's a two-thirds vote, uh, if it's a raisin appropriate, the, but you can't do anything until the money's available, which if it's voted in March, you won't get the money until the first of July. So, the timing and the trigger of all these things is how we got tripped up in the past. I mean, for anybody who's been paying attention over the last five years, we've been talking about the roofs at, at Hastings forever. Uh, we got caught, uh, in the inflationary scenario of things just being much more expensive, and as Amber brought up, the process now is to have a firm bid in hand, so we, when we go to the town for a vote, that vote is all the money we would need because we already have a contract available to us to do the, the work for that money. What we've been doing in the past is using engineers' estimates, which are no good in an inflationary economy.
And I think to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'll just finish, and that is that every time we finally get to the point where we wanna build, we didn't have enough money, so, and we can't afford a contract without enough money.
It's a common problem. So, one of the things you'll see in your folding onto the capital committee, I think you'll really enjoy it, um, is that, um, the, the, the sheets that Kelly gave you ask us to give the level of need and to give some targeted interest in the funding sources, that's just to direct the discussion of the capital committee. The, the select board are in charge of where the funding sources go in the allocation, which is why the motions are done on the town side with direction and collaboration, and the capital committee as a joint committee has that level of conversation around the funding allocations, and that's where they're getting more and more strategic to keep the debt at a certain level, to keep the, the free spending at a level. And I think we've made huge projects, uh, happen, and we've also seen some really good progress in the way the town is managing that. So I think you're really gonna enjoy that committee.
Yeah, we already had one meeting, and, yeah, I'm enjoying it.
Good, yeah, so Kelly and I will be coming soon, so, yeah.
Uh, one more question about the high school sea wing science roof, could you help me understand, so the est- estimated cost is one point six million, but, but you're gonna be asking for the one ninety-two thousand for the design?
Right.
So the one point six, that's just what you expect to get out of that design?
That was the estimate they thought the roof would cost.
Yeah, so the real answer is when you go to bid, that's what it costs. And the only way that works, as I said, is that you have a fixed price that the town meeting votes, and that is what it will cost to do. With, with estimates, you have no idea. And in our system, if you don't have enough money, you go around the cycle again, and again, and again, as we have with Hastings. So, uh, now the process is for real, if the town wishes to, to award, uh, allow us to award the contract at the dollar amount bid, then we'll get it done, and it won't be on the books anymore.
And I also, oh, sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
Oh, no, I just was wondering, um, so I see that for FY twenty-six is when we're anticipating that the actual work will be, will be going out for, for that, so when, I mean, what, what, what town meeting is that, what?
So the, so the, yeah, I know, isn't that so interesting? So the cycle is such that we vote the design dollars for the three roof pieces, if those are approved at town meeting, she'll go out to design, design will progress through, and you'd be going to March town meeting next year in twenty-six, for FY twenty-six to vote the funding, with the target of then moving into summer work to start the roof to start the roof restoration of summer of '26. So, you know, the, the roadmap is this cycle now, design dollars, design dollars. But you'll see, to Steve's point, it's a rough order of magnitude. And when you're looking at those big spreadsheets that Kim is tracking, tho- those are, you know, they have to have something to kind of be doing the work around some of the estimates to kind of push things around. But then they know when they have hard dollars and they know when they have estimates. And I think she's gotten, they've gotten really good about marking so you know that it's a placeholder. So yes, so we would, if the design goes through, it's voted in, in March, we'll be there the next year asking for the money to do the project.
So I guess just to highlight on the capital expenditures committee and its purpose. Its purpose was to be fair to all the departments of the town. So they started off with an idea that the percentage of the town budget would be what was within the bailiwick of the capital expenditures committee. Let's say offhand, it was maybe a million and a half dollars. So you get the proposals, like the sheets you see from the school committee as well as everybody else, fire department, police, board of selectmen, recreation and so on. And the capital expenditures committee would review the merits of each of the items and then categorize which ones they felt were needy and what schedule they should be brought forward to the town meeting. Unfortunately, as you might guess, a million dollars these days doesn't really get you more than about five bricks. And so this last discussion last year, which now Yakub is involved with as the new member on the, on the capital expenditures committee, is a process by which there's enough money so that we don't get so far behind that we have disasters like we did at Armstrong. And so now we're potentially talking an annual budget for this kind of work in the order of eight to 10 million dollars, of which a good piece of that would come from free cash. As you may have picked up in the last discussion that we had with Kristi, that from the town's budget, every year, what returns to the town against the town's school budget is between 12 and 13 million dollars, just because of the schools. So this is the refund, if you will. Where that money goes, it goes into the free cash bin, okay? And in fact, for a number of years, without anybody really realizing it, the school has, the school budget return process from the state has been what has put money in the free cash fund. And so that's how the rest of the town benefits, if you will, from the returns to the town. So, you know, don't feel bad about it. It's just that the distribution needs to be done because we will get so far behind with these budget numbers of fixing roofs, whether it's a school building or the town hall or this building or the other buildings in town. This process needs to make sense. And I believe the board of selectmen have now created a process which does make sense. So you do it, you get the engineering done, you go out for bid with the documents as required by the state. You get a fixed price bid based on the scope and, and it's good. If you do it right, it's good for town meeting. And you can award it within the time that we have, between the time we receive the bid and the time that the town meeting says yes or no. And that's the secret to this. And that's why we've stumbled in the past. And I believe the selectmen now realizing the same thing are going to do the same, the same process for their own work, which is beneficial to the town. Thank you, Kelly.
I had, on a lighter note, our new Assistant Director of Buildings and Grounds, Tony Lemay, has been a great addition to the Westboro Buildings and Grounds team. And I'm thoroughly enjoying my new position.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
And I understand you stole him from Shrewsbury, correct?
I'm sorry?
You stole Tony from Shrewsbury, I believe.
Grafton.
Grafton.
My town.
Yeah, they don't like us at all. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. It's funny.
All right. Now we get to the biggie, the budget presentation.
Now we get to the biggie, thanks. Thanks, Kelly. No, no, thank you. You, you, you earned the right to go home. All right, good stamina tonight, everyone. I know it's cold in here, you're doing great. We are making really excellent progress on the budget. I feel good about where we are and I'm going to step you through this slowly. I think, again, I provide the layers of information for you and we take as long as we need to to understand where we are, discuss it in depth tonight, ask questions. And between now with tonight's presentation and the next one where we bring you a recommendation of what we think should be in the budget, all the things you're going to see tonight when we go through this stuff are our thoughts and proposals and requests. We then work forward against those we feel have a priority and that they need to come in now and you participate in that discussion. And we look at what the cost impact would be in the overall budget, you know, request. So I'm feeling good about where we are and I just want to give a shout out to the fact that this is a very complicated budget year because Anita Patel gets like an award, a triple gold star. The poor woman is at home still, unable to really come into work yet due to the severe leg break she suffered. But she and I have been working virtually on this extensively. We were on the phone last night at 10:45. I think her husband's about ready to like kill me. You know, we're working really hard on this. We both typically are late night workers, but she's really not feeling well. And so you come to this place where I just, I just have to say, she's doing a great job. However, it is more complicated. So, you know, we're really trying to move as quickly as possible. She's also working off of numbers that she didn't establish in Munis and so it's just more complicated to build a giant budget working off of someone else's notes. So we're needing to go slowly so we don't make mistakes and then also train each other so she can see how we've presented the budget, which has tweaks that are somewhat different than how she did that work in Grafton. And so we're learning together, kind of what is the new normal for how she and I bring budgeting to you. I'm feeling good about where we are. I think that we've already had preliminary meetings based upon this work around starting the next presentation. So I'll make sure I can get it to you hopefully earlier tonight, I know. But like, again, we were working on these numbers until right before. So I think we're in good shape tonight and I'm going to step you through it. And you know, I love budget season, so. All right, we are off and running. So tonight, what I'm going to do is I'm going to basically give you the timeline and goals. And we do this because you realize people might tune in tonight and we need them to understand where we are in the process. We're also going to look at the cost impacts that were outlined in the second presentation, just a quick review. So that people that are watching and trying to make sense of it, it's, you know, the repetitive nature of it helps you kind of like get into a rhythm. I'm going to outline the known budget impacts using Circuit Breaker and Preliminary Financials for Special Education. I'm feeling very good about where those numbers are. And I'm going to give you a picture then of all of the requests that came in from WLT. Daniel will do talking on his and he'll also help me with technology if there are any questions. But I feel like between us, we have kind of the flow of those requests. And then I'll outline to you how we're going to take what you see to where we'll end up. And then I can take more questions. It's also okay as we move through, if you want to ask questions as we go. Like this is our shared business meeting where we get an opportunity to do the work that it takes to build the budget. You don't need to wait till the end. I am comfortable tonight, it's not a long presentation. We can talk as we go. I'm very comfortable with that, okay? All right, we are off and running. So you can see we're here on November 15th. Now, we haven't had as much contact as we typically do with, with FinCom, but I believe that they shifted in practice after COVID. And I think they've learned they can watch from home, they can track the numbers. And Beth, you know, understands how to find us and that we would set up a meeting. But I am going to have Lynn put in a call to them at this point because I feel we have preliminary enough numbers that this is where they kick in between what we're looking at now and that final number to have discussion. Because what we've learned over the years is it isn't productive if all their questions are coming at the end and we've already made final recommendations. So between now and final recommendations and when you vote and we push that number across town to town hall, I think it's very important that we sit down with them. And typically, I would invite one to two members to sit in with us so that we can participate in just the flow of information back and forth. The work we do here really is to sustain the excellence of high performance and the support students need and families need and faculty need for us to have an incredibly well-run district. You look at the complexity of the conversation we had earlier tonight around our L funding and the transition of students and the complexity of, of programming nowadays. And I just have to say that the level of excellence maintained in this district is a gigantic shout out to the quality of instruction happening in our classrooms. When you hear about the complexity of the rolling student needs, that we are able to create continuity and high performance is, is a benchmark that I think we almost take for granted and it is really important to call it out. We need to maintain that. We want to stay in a depth of respect and collaboration around process with the town. And we want to always be strategic about where we can manage funding in ways that bring in the, the most responsible number that you feel voting on and are willing to stand by as we head into town meeting. So first, let's just, okay, look at the draw people. Are they the cutest things? That's preschool.
Horrible.
That is, I'm just going to give you a developmental snapshot. That's high-performance preschool art. So when you're three, the fact that they have feet and hands and hair and clothes and they're all standing on close to the same ground, very, very high performance. And there's a sun in the sky. So when you think about benchmarking three-year-olds, that's a high-performance benchmark. So we're going to look at the operational 25 fixed costs that I started unpacking for you a while ago. Last snapshot at this amount, you remember, this is last year's budget number. So as you're thinking about where we're going to go, our current budget is at 63,539,476. Everything functions around that. Is the functional budget we're now in operational costs on. But as you think about budgeting, I just don't like you'd have to go back into your budget book if you have a question. It's nice to have it right in the presentation. You'd be like, what was facilities, you know, last year? And so you can just see how it all, the trajectory of, of how it happens. One of the things that impacts fixed costs are fixed contracts. And that is the salary number that we're really now have rolled and completed and we're just reviewing again. I have that number and what that rollover is looking like. We're just in the final checks on it so we can build the final budget. And you can just, you just need to remember that those are fixed costs that we have to pay. The transition in it, sorry. Transportation, another fixed cost. We went through this before. Anita did really good work to look at past increases, to study the trends, to look at the CPI. And she discussed and shared with you why she was carrying the 5.25 as the increase we think is the safe level to provide moving into next year. And that's the 193,78. So that's a fixed cost number you're going to see in the slides. Sorry, because the stand is in the way. I apologize, guys. I don't know, yeah, just forward it for me, Daniel. Thank you. The next set of fixed costs, which we talked about before, are electricity, fuel and trash. Electricity's number and the lock-in on that contract comes from the town. So they gave us that number. You can see it in the electricity slide and you can study it in the growth of it over the years. Last year was really big, this year much smaller. Last year was 30% increase, it's at five this year. Fuel and then trash removal, we discussed those before for a total of the 58,533 increase. And you see there that one of the fixed costs that Anita hadn't been able to complete and pull in yet was that the phone costs are, again, a fixed contract of what we have to pay and that is an $8,900 increase. So when I get to the fixed cost slide where I'm starting to show you how things are plugging in, you're going to see that that 58,533 has gone up by the 8,900. So just so you can track the money, I'll show you when we get there. This is a slide you've seen before. Next one, Daniel. I also remind you that the volatility of enrollment, that we've done incredibly good work. I just want to give a shout out to you guys. You are the shepherds of this budget. It's yours once it's voted. I help you represent it as we bring it into the town, but it is your charge to represent that budget to the community and to be able to speak well to it. And your commitment to keeping class sizes low has kept us a high-performing district. And it allowed us to absorb some of these changes without any impact. And we're tracking, watching it now because I feel like there's a little volatility in some of the housing growth. And there's a lot of discussion around, you know, some additional multi-unit housing in town. And there's a couple other new pieces that are still floating out there beyond the ones I've called out to you. I think it's going to be something where we are going to have to consider next year. And this will hearken back to work that Steve will remember, another enrollment projection study. You need to make sure you're tracking where you are. So we need to make a note of that. We need to think about it. We would bring in Niask again. We need a strong enrollment study rollover to give us a new trajectory to make sure we're tracking our numbers accurately. Want to go to the next one? All right. That should be slides, you remember, that's money you've seen. No surprises there. That's a rehearsal to where we're going. So those are base numbers that we know we're going to plug right in and those aren't going to change. Next, we have all of the requests that came in from WLT and we're going to start looking at those. These are not final decisions, these are requests. We now are in the justification and discussion range and I will make, working with Daniel and the team, recommendations to you for those that are absolutes that need to come in, ones where we might be able to wait a year, ones where I might push some funds off somewhere else, like do whatever we can to manage it. But we'll talk it through as we look at them tonight, okay? So next up, you can see that the big number we've been talking about is just the technology funding costs in the bracket of John's budget because we've had the increases that he's shared along the way. And he called out this need in his report last year. And if you want, I can resend you that report. But I mean, he basically just talked about the escalation in costs for software, for web-based services, for hardware, as well as some special projects, like, you know, he's 10 years in now. He's rolling over the Wi-Fi hubs, they need to be updated. They do a really good job for longevity and updating and management. Our, our smart boards are rolling over and he has a new cycle that's now 10 years old. So he needs to keep us current. The worst thing you see is you walk into districts and you see technology that got tapped out that isn't current. And so John has done a beautiful job to space that technology out, to leverage getting the best advantageous contracts he can. But he has to keep us on a cycle to stay current. So his current request totals 102,962. And that's an 11.6% increase on his current budget work in district. And what we're going to do is we're going to look at the components that are folded into that. And then we will return in our final recommendation with whether or not we want to carry that whole number or whether I might be right, making a recommendation that might, you know, do something different with that. So if you go to the next slide, you're going to see how the breakdown of that money occurs, okay? So I feel like I have on my teacher voice, sorry. I have on a teacher voice right now. I'm like, now, we're going to go to the next slide. So everyone, next slide. I'll use a more energized. I feel like I'm using this very quiet, this money shouldn't scare you voice.
Storytime.
It's like, okay, everyone. I can use my happier voice. Let's look at general fund. So when you look at what John has in that total dollar request, all of that is coming, see that general fund number there? All of that's folded into that 192. So it's including in that number in his request, his general cost escalations. But this general fund work that has to happen, that is moving forward in bits and pieces and needs to continue. The Wi-Fi upgrades at 55,000, the high school is in desperate need. And I know right down there at the end that our favorite representative is already nodding. We are having serious, serious Wi-Fi issues at the high school where capacity is, is not functioning at the level of functionality we're used to. And so John is very anxious to roll the high school. He did proof of concept in other buildings. He did it at Forbes, smaller settings. The high school's next up and, and we need to get that done. He's carrying 55,000 in those upgrades. He's carrying teacher laptop rollover. Again, he spaces those cycles out. And Daniel has notes and can help me. That's a five-year replacement cycle. He spreads it out. That's 150 laptops that will be replaced, more than two times the number replaced this year. So he's spacing those out. And that's his key cost update on laptops. And Daniel, help me if there's detail I missed. There's the increased cost to the website. So you know we're in the middle of a website upgrade. We picked a high-quality website that I'm very excited to see us move to. It's going to do a new rollover that will be fresh and contemporary and, and much more efficient and effective for us. It's a probably, we have built-in funding this year for the initial rollover and we've built that into current contract work this year. But the, but the stay-fixed cost of increase between the old website vendor and the new one is going to be one is going to be the $7,500 a year. You get what you pay for. We did not have an interactively visual website before. The going standard of our competitors and our colleagues around us have all moved to this level of website, and in order for us to remain, you know, in partnership with the level of excellence in our area, this is a very important change. Let's see, I'm looking at what else he's calling out there. The next is the Parent Square, which I think, I would say, is a successful launch. We're hearing really good feedback about what that does for us as a community, but the differential in that ongoing conversion cost is the $10,000. We all know that communication is the lifeblood of connection with our families and expectations that we keep that at a high level. It's been a while since we kind of bumped up that goal. It's been riding in the strategic plan. You know you want me to get that done. This is the year it's going to happen, and then the sustained costs come into next year. I feel really good about the website rollover. We're on our way. I feel very good about the overall launch of Parent Square, but now by next year, those will be built-in operational successes that you'll see at the end of the year in the strategic plan review, and then they become operational rollover costs. And then lastly, replacing of the iPad, keyboards, smart board installation materials, general repairs, like it's a big machine, you know that, 4,000 students, 700 staff, lots of devices, all rolling. That cost isn't too bad, but you're looking at the impact of kind of the escalation of the cost of all those services. So that's all what's built into what was already his regular operational cost plus that increase. So I just want you to look at the other items, and John does a nice job to break them out, and over the years, we've rotated them. Currently, he's carrying these capital items, and we usually manage those in-house within our budget framework, and we do them through rotations of remaining funding and maintenance and grounds work at the end of the year around building upgrade work. We would say, for example, move that and do the phones. That's all part of building upgrade work, falls out of what remaining costs we would have hopefully in place in building grounds at the end of the year. So John and I are always carrying these capital items and then breaking them out in proportional costs and doing them within budget. So he has those clustered. Like, when you see those $200,000 numbers, those can feel big, but those are done in proportional pieces, and we carry them in capital, and that's usually done with in-house budget funds. So those don't hop out and become large capital items unless, like, for example, I needed to do the whole AV up system grade now. We would have rotated that into capital. Right now, where those are held out, because we'll do them within the operational budget But, you know, we've got so many big capital items out there, we're trying to space out the leveraged use of budget costs with those other larger capital projects. Currently, and then you see the cameras, and so the cameras right now, just beginning to forecast those, we might get more grants. Currently, we're putting the camera, you know, we had, our goal was, this is a school committee goal, that we would bring camera installation for security purposes to all six schools, inclusive also of seventh, the preschool. We've made very substantial headway. We are down to basically filling in the gaps at Armstrong and Hastings, which are partially covered. And Mill Pond is happening now on the $200,000 grant and some ARPA funds, and he's currently got that out to bid, and he's moving on that. It'll be done by the close of the year. So Mill Pond will be fully cambered for security by the end of the year using grant funding and ARPA funds. Very happy to see that happen. These are now riding as the next projects. He's calling them out to us, and, you know, if we can do some of them piecemeal in-house, we will, or we'll look for more grant funding. And then lastly, we have these two big projects that shape up as projects that typically in the past I've looked for outside funding on, maybe like Turkey Trot Funds, which was originally targeted towards technology uses and is still available for us to go to that group and to say, would you consider supporting this project for the school funding that you brought in? And there's two of them. And then sometimes we go to like Amazon, or like we, we look for other funding sources if it's a good fit for them. So these are two, which is the Digital Art and Music Lab. That's all of the computers in the Digital Two and Digital Three Art Lab. All of our classes take place in there. They're all fully programmed with a waiting list. Our digital art program is very strong. That is currently run out of a whole set of high-end Mac laptops that are now at a place where they can't be upgraded with the new software at this point, and that lab's going to need to roll over. We actually originally funded that lab with Turkey Trot and WEF funding, I think. So I believe its packaging is one I might try to propose somewhere else. I'm foreshadowing it to you, and we'll try to go for alternative funding. And then the other is the CAD lab downstairs is really ready to be upgraded. We are doing a lot of really robust CAD work. Those computers have a lifespan where you just need to get them with more power, more memory, more capacity, based upon the upgrades of all the software. That's a $27,000 cost. Again, maybe like some company would love to help us with that. So those are, those are the technology pieces, and you can see how John and the group of us working strategically chunk those funds, move them around, and then try to rotate, making sure we keep the systems in the district thriving. All right, next one.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, hop in.
So the, I get the general fund, the capital and alternative funding sources. So are these technology projects and items and requests that he hopes to get accomplished over the next year? Or is there like...
Yeah, so great question. The stuff in general fund are absolutes in his mind. And when John's adamant, I listen, he goes, no, 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 those have to happen now.
Yeah.
So the general fund request he has, he's in an adamant level. That's how I decide what, how to shift John's funds around. I just listen to his level of adamance. He's like, no, no, that has to happen now. And when John says that, I go, okay, that goes in your general fund. We need to sustain the excellence of our technology district. So those are all his costs that are the absolutes, and the other stuff are pieces he's forecasting. We might get some done now. We might get some done in the summer, and then some would move to his absolute list next year if they haven't been accomplished.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to figure out, like, that's a lot, so.
It is a lot. I mean, you know, he stages in different times, but the capital and the alternative have a, have a wider lifespan, and that's how I helped him sort those. And, well, he sorted them, I didn't do it. I just listened. That's my job.
It makes, it makes sense.
Yeah. And I'm very hopeful that those, those two other labs, he feels pretty strenuously that we need to move on those, but I've got them sitting out there because I think we can work with the community to maybe get some help on those. Great question. Yep.
One more question. So on the previous slide, I think, the $102,000 increase, that's just increase of maintaining the currents, software and hardware, and then the 190 on the, on the technology request, the general fund, that's, that's what's in addition to that previous increase.
Right. Well, wait, so let me just make sure I understood your question. You stated it, I think, correctly, but say it again. Sorry, I got, I had a, like, momentary mental blank.
Is this, is this slide, this number in any way related to the next slide?
Yes, so, great question. So see that general fund list? 55, 85, 75, 10, and 332.
Yes, yeah.
That is the 102 increase, I think, close to the math, and some other general increases.
It's to 190.
What?
Under general fund. If I add those numbers in the general fund column, that's, that adds up to 190?
Yeah, but he has some other budgets offsets that he's using in his 24 hours. So he does, so, thank, great question. So all of those people do reallocation, set aside other costs, move their money around, and he's going to accomplish all of that, but he's had some re-cost allocations in there, and he's got the 2025 number, able to do all of that. Other changes he made within his budgeting, he moved everything around, eliminated some other costs, paced out things, and that's the differential he needs to get all that done, and that's his new total.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. We were playing with that number a lot today, I just have to say, and I'm going to go back and confirm with Anita, the 24 to 25 number, but I know that John's numbers in there are fixed, but he, but Anita felt he only needed the 102 to get all that done. So it might be that you're right and I'm wrong, and that the numbers don't add up, but they, they know they can cover it without, but I'll double-check.
Okay.
Because when I looked at it, we were having this exact conversation, and she texted me late last night, but she shouldn't be. She should be resting. So I'll confirm the number, but I think she was confident that the 102 is what John needed, and I believe she was going back to FY '24, where she might, he might have an inaccuracy in one of his numbers based upon the starting budget allocation. So there's a little, there's a little realignment there that, that she was explaining to me, but the 102 is the number you got to watch, and it's lower than it was, and I like the lower number, so that's why it's in there. We were trying to shave that number, and she went back into how he, with the 24 numbers he was using, and she thinks they need to, to discuss that, but she gave me the 102 number, so I'm going to hold with that.
Okay. Thank you.
He's texting to...
Oh, is she explaining?
Yeah, so she's saying the 190 is part of her current allocation, is part of the current allocation, the 190,000, but the 103 is the additional requests that he has. So I guess...
Okay, so then the slide, so then that portion of the slide is not representative of the 103.
One always has to be careful, because the way this whole setup is, we talk about increase over yesterday, and I don't usually comment on anything until we get to the summary of everything against last year's...
Against where it all ends up. Yes, yes, yes.
You know, this is presentation story, but, you know, the bottom line is what matters, and we're getting there.
Well, I think, no, thank you. So Anita's slide, and so this is where you're, you're looking at the complications of how we're working right now. There's a lot of back and forth by the way we're managing this. So Anita is saying that his, his initial, the 990 request, 102 is his general increase, and the others are new requests.
Yeah, that's what I understood from all of it.
Okay, that's fine. So for now, what I'm going to say is, those are his requests. How the money ends up, you'll see when we make final recommendation. I'll email you after I clarify with her, and I'll send you an email specifically on those costs and his totals. What his total is just for general budget increase costs, and what that breakout is, and then what new, the new requests are clear, and the total's clear. But I'll let you know what's in the general increase in the, in the first number, okay? I apologize.
No, it's fine. It's like you said, it's requests.
These are all requests. None of these are going to happen until we get them done, so, you know.
I think the last meeting we had also, I believe it gave us a breakdown of, if I remember correctly, or if it was a general breakdown of what the technology costs were. I'm looking at this graph, and then I'm like, it would be nice to have something to look at, but I think that you did provide that last time, right?
We did, and she had, and then she updated this table, so, again, I'll re, I'll, I'll re-cross reference their totals. I know what he's requesting, that's key. What ends up in and what the total cost is, is what you'll see in our final recommendation. But I'll email you a general update that lays out the clarifying note on his overall budget increase request, what that covers for him, and what we then will, what we are deciding when we look at any additional pieces that come in, okay? Thank you, Yakub. I'm sorry for the confusion, you guys. All right. Can I step us to the next slide? All right. So we have two, oh, it's time to go home. We have two major areas where you have funding increases that are, you know, will require lots of final decisions, the technology, which we just went through. And then we have curriculum and instruction budget, where Daniel is, has a series of requests that he has put in, and again, you don't see his final budget slide, these are just his requests. So at this time, I'm just going to have him step through the rationale of his requests, and then we'll look at what all of his final budget numbers are and where he comes in, okay?
Cool. Okay. So looking at the columns here, the new requests, the first box there, the ELA program review that I gave you a report on last June, and I tell, I sort of, I mentioned one of the recommendations is to go with a digital screener for the first time, to use like an online assessment that we would give to our students in grades three through six. So they would take an online reading assessment, that's sort of more state-of-the-art than what we've been currently using, which is like the paper-based DRA. This kind of online system is efficient in terms of time, but also very effective for us in terms of being able to give instant information to the teachers and the specialists, and also have longitudinal information to be able to track progress of the kids. So that, that's that piece. The FOS program, that's the, that's the science textbooks and their online textbooks, and the online textbook industry, the way it works is they give you like a six-year license that is greatly discounted, instead of doing a year-over-year, right, in terms of what you get. So a six-year license is up on some of our, it's basically upper elementary licenses that we need to renew for the six-year cycle there. The data dashboard, this is something that is, basically, the concept here is to be able to take multiple data sources that we have and put it together into one dashboard so that teachers and administrators have easy access to the information, both from those multiple sources in real time, but also longitudinally follow students. For years, we've been talking about this, and, and it's been, a lot of school districts have gone forward with dashboards and not been satisfied with what's been there, because a lot of them are too, sort of confining in terms of how they operate, and we were looking for something that would be very flexible and could take our existing data sources and not be limiting. And this particular dashboard that we found, that there's a group, it's called, why am I blanking on their name? Something, hmm, something Architects. I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the, the exact name, but we've been going back and forth. I've been working with Scott Henderson and myself have gotten some demos. We've talked to other districts. We've looked at this dashboard, and for an annual cost of $15,000, we think it's very worthwhile. What it will do is K through 12, it will be giving us data on students, not only like the digital screener, that'll be one piece of data, but there's other pieces of like reading data that kids start to, like, we start to have on kids in kindergarten, that are now sitting in spreadsheets that are not available to like a third-grade teacher or specialist unless they dig up the old spreadsheet. So data dashboard will take, it'll take assessment data, it'll also take behavior data, so if there, if the child has had any kind of social-emotional issues, or, or, you know, discipline-related issues, academic issues that have been flagged, but they maybe, maybe were referred to testing, but they didn't qualify, that, all of that information right now is not in databases form and is not accessible to like a Mill Pond faculty member who just wants to look back at what happened in, in the elementary years. So I think it's, it would be a great investment for, for us to have that. So that's just the context for that. Also, from the program review, the ELA program review, we did recommend putting in new writing units, and so we are going to be purchasing some materials. We'd like to purchase, purchase some materials as part of that recommendation, which are some units that the kindergarten through grade six teachers would have for basically our new enhanced writing program that would come out of the program review. So those are all the new requests that are there. The two other columns here, these are existing programs that we have in place, and over the years, they've started to eat up more and more of, of the curriculum budget, because the costs are going up on these things, and we, we keep on. So there's a couple of things that are subscriptions, like the ZERN program is K through tw, K through eight math enhancement, sort of like program that is used, that is, you know, an essential part of our math program. It helps reinforce and remediate, and that's a valuable program that we have in place. The Elevation Program is a database on all of the ELL students in the district. Lexia is targeted for struggling readers. Seesaw is used in the K3 schools, and all of those are sort of online, those are subscriptions that are year-over-year that, you know, add up to that amount that, that you see there. The other column with the workbooks, we have had in the, for several... The other column with the workbooks, we have had in the, for several years, math workbooks and science supplies. The phonics workbooks is new as of a couple of years ago. You remember that part one of our ELA program review was to bring in a phonics program. So a combination of adding workbooks from K to three that are consumable workbooks for phonics, and the inflation that we've been experiencing, the vendors are, have put prices up by as much as thirty-four percent in the last couple of years. So putting this all together will give you a bottom-line number at a future presentation, but this is, you know, these are the component parts. I mean, in the past, I've had some flexibility in the curriculum budget, so that in a given year, I would have somewhere in the order of forty thousand dollars, maybe that could be used for targeted professional development that was flexible to like, if a, a new set of, if textbooks were falling apart and we needed to order some, there was flexibility in my budget. Now it's all basically dedicated from the beginning of the year to these things, so I have no flexibility. So part of what I'm, you know, Amber and I are going back and forth.
We're haggling over it.
We're haggling over it, is like, you know, how much, how much can we, like, is there anything here that we could trim back to give me the, you know, the ability to have some flexibility in the budget, so that like, you know, when there's a conference that's happening, or a consultant we wanna be able to use, it's not all tied up right from the beginning of the year in, in these specific items.
And I think, to complement that, like, I think when we look at the way new proposals work, you know, I think of it in two packages, and it requires Daniel and I to keep sorting it out, which is new requests for things where money needs to come in, it needs to be allocated, because we want those things in our program. Those are right there, and that's a hard number. The others are a percentage increase to his base budget, and he's detailing to you why he feels he needs that base increase, and that increase is the portion we're discussing. And that's where we wanna go back in and look at like, okay, I wanna see the total percentage of your budget, again, against the proportional delineated part, and have a discussion around, is that a two-step process to get you moving forward? Do we pay for all of those items and make sure those come in as new core? That has to be priority one, but we can't leave him without a general, more substantial increase, and that's what he and I are looking at. So that's the process of how this works, so it's a good example, and Daniel's here to defend himself, so I can use it as an example, where we kinda push back and forth. I'm like, well, wait a minute, you paid for those out of your budget, how much more increase do you need? You don't need the whole cost covered, you need a portion of the cost covered, how much? And he's like, I don't see it that way. So, you know, we go back and forth, that's how we kinda work it out, and it's collaborative.
I think you're misrepresenting how I'm representing it to you, but.
No, you're defending things you need to present high-level curriculum and instruction in this district, and so, you know, I'm, I'm teasing him.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just not used to, you know, where I'm at the place where, like I was saying, at the beginning of the year, I'm locked in, and I have no flexibility with.
Right, right. I'm like, how locked in are you?
Yeah, hundred percent. You could, you could ask Anita. So, and then one thing, just so you know, on the math workbooks, I've pushed back on Jenny Dean, our coordinator there, and I said, like, you know, there are some workbooks that I see that are not completely used in some of the early elementary levels, and she's gone back and helped pair back.
Yeah.
I mean, we went, and those workbooks are up at forty-four thousand dollars in consumables, and, and I already got her, you know, back to like thirty-eight thousand on that, so we've cut back some. But that's.
Yeah, I mean, it's what, it's what this process is annually. And I think you don't wanna cut back workbooks, and then everybody has a copy machine. So you, you move, you move, you move from a streamlined capacity to provide something that's ready to go and makes sense and is clear, to having people copying, which takes time and copy costs, but you also don't want wasted money. So there's this tension that he's figuring out with her. And then we're looking at what is proportional percentage that Daniel's budget needs to go up to maintain these. He, we always liked that instead of pushing those costs to the individual grade level, that in housing them at central office, we control over tracking them, knowing them, seeing them, understanding the cost increase, letting him do the contract work he could to push back with companies to get most advantageous cost. But it does mean a lot of that stuff pools into his budget, and so those are areas where, you know, we've looked at potentially also moving a couple of those things strategically into school-based budgets, and say, how much do you value these? And these are gonna be carried in your budget. So that's the tension of all the discussion that's going on in budgeting to come to the best advantageous number, while we also maintain all our budgets and, and the programs where we need them.
I have a question about the data dashboard. So you were saying that a lot of schools did not, it sounds sort of like a health record system. I mean, just the way that the, off of medical offices, you can pull up a individual and sort of get a history.
Yeah, structurally, yeah. Tracking data and with access.
So, but you were seeing a lot of schools haven't had luck with it in terms of, so is what makes this company different?
There's been different products that are, have been out there, that have been like, people wanna sell off the shelf and not customize to your needs, and, and the thing is, those, those constrain you to say, you know, they'll say, you can only use it with these data sources. And so if you have like, if you have spreadsheets that you're using that you want in there, they're like, that's not what we do. We will create like a feed from other existing databases into one data source. And we're like, no, we have flat files that are like customized to our needs, that we need to then get into something that's a database, that's longitudinal. So that's the difference, is that this company that we're, you know, now is, the, the person who's behind it has recognized that school districts are, are looking for that kind of flexibility.
Yeah.
So we do have like a student information system, we have our ELL system I was just telling you about, we have, you know, all these other sources, and it'll just put them together.
And that's a huge improvement. When I was leaving my last district before I came here, which is now heading into ten years, we just had purchased one of those package systems, but it was so complex, nobody then wanted to use it. Getting the data in there, you had to port it all in, and you had to redo it, and you had to use their stuff, and it didn't end up being, you know, as leveraged as we wanted it to be. I feel like the, across the span of this time, the products are getting better, and they're responding to what they've learned, and I think the time is right for us, because we also have good data-tracking systems, and I feel like it's helping us responsively do good instructional work. So that one's, you know, heavy on the list as a, as a, all of the ones in our new requests are kind of essential to, to program review updates, that we've made commitments to, to make sure that our, that our work stays functional at a high level.
Can I follow up on that? Just, is it Open Architects? That's the?
Yeah.
Yeah. So they will essentially build a custom adapters from your data sources to this, to this, to this view. It's gonna be web-based, I imagine?
Yes.
So will they provide support after they, they, they build that integration?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is, so about that fifteen thousand includes the support for some, for some number of years?
It's an annual, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's reasonably priced for what they say they're gonna do.
Not bad. All right, everyone, how are we doing? We're almost to the end. It's a lot of numbers, it's a lot of information. This is the actual, this is the most essential presentation you see, kind of before we come to conclusions, where you're then looking at what we're recommending as core decisions, and you can see all the things people wanna do, and what the overall cost it is to run the district. So, you know, we're in a good place. I don't want you to feel like, the numbers can make you feel like, that's a lot, that's a lot. I feel like we're, we're moving forward towards, you know, a decent budget proposal here, so let's hold tight. So, next slide. You know that the out-of-district costs, we decided that we were going to, and we're showing you the past number. Remember last year, we took the big whammy for out-of-district tuition costs for students that need to go out at fourteen percent, and that was painful. This year, we're carrying four point six-nine percent increase on the existing tuition costs, which we think will average out and cover the increases that we'll see. We go to the next slide. This is the slide that helps us start to see how numbers lock in. Now, this is one of those slides that we keep the same, 'cause it can be complex to kind of track. So I'm gonna step you through it, but the bottom line is, it's good, usually that last number is got brackets around it, so the fact that there are no brackets around the last number means you can start feeling good as I step you through the numbers, right? Because if there's brackets around that number, what we're saying is, we automatically need to ask for more money for tuitions. That's what that bracket means. No brackets means that eighty-nine, seven fifty-one gets reallocated towards other budget costs requests, and salary, and all the other things we're using right now to build the budget. So again, to a certain extent, each year, you kinda do zero-based budgeting. It's not like they automatically would have gotten that money. But because special education has so much complexity, and such as a quarter of our budget, we kinda show, where was it last year, where is it this year, so you kind of understand the change. And I think it, it's helped the town a lot stabilize and understanding Circuit Breaker. I feel like you guys kinda get it now, too. So we can walk through it, and I can answer questions. So basically, you're gonna take, what are the costs we have to do? What are the offsets we have, and where does that leave us? And we show you what we had last year, and then what it tells us about where we're going with tuitions. This year, there's good news on tuitions, and some further good news on the overall special education budget. So, we're gonna be spending about a hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine thirty on the collaborative costs, another three million, six seventy-six and change on out-of-district placements. That gives you that three million, eight hundred total for students that will be in other, you know, placements next year as of now. The next bracket is basically just how we get a Circuit Breaker number. It comes to us, we put in allocations, we carry this number. The number that we have this year to build the budget for Circuit Breaker is two million, seventy-six thousand, nine seventy-one. So then all we do is math, right? We look at, what are the out-of-district costs, the seven, the three million that we, that we just talked about? That's out-of-district tuition, you see that number up above. Then we're carrying unassigned tuition at four hundred thousand, which is what we did in last budget cycle, to make sure that if we have any unanticipated costs, that we're carrying planned budget money. You then deduct it against the Circuit Breaker number, and you get what it's gonna cost us that we need to carry in the general fund. So then you kinda do the math again, you drop that down. We, we show the collaborative cost and the out-of-district costs, because they're different programming structures, and you add those two together, and you see the bottom there, two million, one hundred and twenty-three, oh, seven, zero, is kind of the net amount of money we need for tuitions after the offsets of Circuit Breaker. Then we look at, well, how much did we budget last year? What were we paying last year, and what are we gonna pay this year? So you can see, last year, we paid two hundred and twelve, two million, two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred for our out-of-district costs, and this year, those have gone down some, so that basically, without any new allocations into tuition costs, we're, we're gonna be able to then do some reallocation, and right now, that looks like it's hovering around ninety thousand. So those, those monies will shift over. We knew that we saw an increase, you know, the Circuit Breaker goes up and down against the numbers of kids coming and going, that's always a volatile number, but because we always know what that number is as a lock-in, it lets us kind of plan and protect ourselves, all right? I feel very good about where this number is in terms of cost and planning, and sustained the four hundred thousand to allow us to cover other budget costs and things that can happen. For example, if a student is in an out-of-district placement, if their behavior escalates or their needs escalate, they will bill us mid-year for Para-educator addition, even at an offset, which just is amazing to me. But that is a truth. Even after we're paying them two hundred thousand dollars a year, if they add a staff member, they will bill it against our student profile. And that's just the design of the model, and we have to accept that and know what it is. But in carrying that cost, it gives us a way to absorb that during the year. And let's say, for example, that the four point six-nine percent increase we're carrying was off, right? You've got that, you've got that tuition balance over the four hundred to pick that up. So I feel like our, I feel very good about the stabilization of this budget, because in that three million, eight hundred number is the anticipated four point six-nine cost increase carried. So that's a fine number, and we're in good shape.
One question. The, why, the reimbursement rate, seventy-five percent, is always this?
That's what, we always carry the number that they tell us what it will be. Sometimes they, they haven't, it's never been higher than that in a very long time. That's what it currently is, and they tell you that it won't, that, that typically, that they'll tell you, if they'll kind of give you flags, that they don't anticipate it going down. And this year, that's the rate that it came in at.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. It's nice to have a good news slide in there, right? And then if you go to the next slide, so we've kind of been looking at, what are the fixed costs we know? What are all that big pile of requests? And again, I apologize for my confusion in working with Anita and John on the technology slides, and I promise you, she's already texting me saying she'll clean up a set of notes for us. And I'm now gonna show you how these fixed costs are plugging in. So right now, there you see, we took the tuition number, we had, and we plugged in Sheri's number, and we plugged in her Level Fund service, and actually, her budget will be able to be slightly lower overall this year, which is again advantageous, you know, again, to get that within the balance of if it's for, it's for the, for the, for the percentage of students that her budget is covering, it's a quarter of the overall budget, and so it's nice when we can get that number kind of into a zone that's closer to like the riding percentage we would hope that it would be. And it's nice when you're, when you can provide the level of service we do, doesn't chew more and more of your budget. So I feel like, just shout out to Sheri and her team that that budgeting is looking good. You see that we level serviced, as in our plan right now, all of the schools and all the programs, because last year, we gave them a two percent increase. So they got a bump, we're stabilizing them at that bump and leaving them there in our plan right now. Then you see Sheri's budget goes down a little bit. There's that transportation number, that's a fixed cost we gave you. There's the facilities number, where I combined the known number of the fifty-eight thousand plus the phone number, and that's the total. And then you can see that the total increase to all operational across, across district as of now is the one seventy-eight, seven fifty-eight. So I'm gonna operate with that hard number, and then I'm gonna build forward. I'm gonna carry that hard number, I'm gonna carry the salary number that we're now finalizing and double-checking, and then we're gonna go into all those requests and work to build a final recommendation. So if you go to the next slide, I'm just gonna show you FTE requests. So that's all the fixed costs. So all that stuff I just showed you, that all comes out to the one seventy-eight thousand, that's gonna happen. The other requests are FTE requests, and again, I'm showing them to you, I'm not sure where we're gonna end up. I don't think we need to dwell on these, I think it's just you can read them for yourself. These are different requests, and sometimes we fund some of these on grants, and sometimes we don't fund them, and we work forward each year to look at, within our salary allocation, do we need this allotment? And that's what we're looking at right now. So in some cases, you know, I might come back and say, it's gonna be a point five, it's not gonna be a one point oh, or, so you, you've seen each year that, we always show you what people are thinking they might need, and sometimes we reorganize program, too. So that's all happening as part of the preliminary budget planning. These are the requests that are currently in, and they have, I've already asked them to tier these out to me, so I know for some people, they're marked as like a three, they're not an urgent level one. So then I'm gonna, I know that when we start building the other number, and we see where we end up. So when we bring back the final recommendation next time, I might say, for now, we're carrying the Mill Pond School request for the additional music teacher, we don't have to have it to schedule next year. But I start to foreshadow it to you, and that's how they foreshadow FTE. You're not gonna see all of these come forward, just wanna reassure you. The principals are like, what? If they're looking from home, what do you mean? But, you know, these are not all gonna be in the budget. But these are the requests that come forward. And if you go to the next slide, these are building-based operational requests for increases. Again, these are requests, sometimes we take, you'll see, like, for example, last year, there were a lot of these, and I, we, we funded some out of a grant, we funded some out of the student activity account. But I just let them give us things they want, and we come back to you, and we say, you know, the lacrosse helmets can be funded out of student activity accounts, but it's a request, it's a chunk of money, we show it, we're clear that that's the budget allocation we're gonna use in order to make it happen. So you'll see all of these, and then you'll see what the decisions are on them. Like, for example, the ten thousand in fixtures for bathrooms, I'm gonna push that right back to building-based maintenance and say, you do that of your building-based maintenance fund, cut some other things, move things around. If you wanna replace faucets right now, that's gotta come out of the budget I already gave the high school facilities, you know? That's the type of discussions we have against these requests, and all of that will go into what we can get done. And next one. Just reminding you of our history, here's the way that a budget rolls, and, you know, it's different each year based upon our needs, but I always show it to you, just so you can remember. remember. And then if you go to the next slide, here's how we're going to end up. I've kind of been echoing it as we go along. Next, I'm final determination of salary line items, it looks, it looks good, it's all been rolled over. I want to make sure that every step and lane was given. I want to make sure that all of the staff that we currently have, we've cross-referenced every name of every human being paid, working in this district, and I can match it to a position code and that they've been stepped and then laned if they need to be. And then we figure out what that number is. It looks good, we, I never liked the number, but I feel like I'm, I'm very, very sure it's accurate and that gives me rest. We're then going to prioritize all those requests you saw, we're going to develop alternative funding and decisions and then I'll come forward to you to make a final recommendation. Now, when I do that, I'll present it and discuss it and then there's a nice chunk of time before you vote it again. And in the last several years, we've had really good discussion with FinCon, with you guys, we've had good discussions. Sometimes those discussions have sent me back to look at it again and we've been able to like add, some years we've added something, some years we trimmed something. You know, that, that's what you're going to look at, you're going to look at all the stuff that I had in this presentation, the things I think we want to bring forward, working with the whole team to recommend and then look at what that would cost us. And then we have discussion and you have final voting decision around those, those recommendations. And in the past couple of years, we've made some interesting tweaks to them, not substantial, but a little bit up, a little bit down based upon that discussion. So my recommendation to you, it's not, that's why it says recommendation. I think it's an important thing that, you know, you're empowered to look at it, that we look at it and then we've got two weeks, actually three in there, where, before we make the, a hard number vote. Okay? I feel really good about where we are, it's just, I have to say, it's been a really complicated year. We had to, you know, really look at 24 a lot and make sure that we were clear about what was going on in 24's funding before we could build 25 and we've just gotten to a place where I feel like, you know, I'm feeling good about where we are. And if you hit the next slide, just go click, 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 we're through those Kelly already talked about, I mean, we don't need to talk about them again. I just, there you go, questions. You asked as we went, you know, I don't want you to have to glaze over, but, you know, I think we're in good shape. I always say that until I see the number two and I'm like, I love it, I don't love it, what can we do? You know, you need to feel that that's what the money is to run the district and you feel confident when you voted that you can defend it. In order to maintain the Westboro Public Schools, that's what we need. So you see everything and we'll make a recommendation and we'll show you where those numbers come from. Again, like the exact hard decisions and then we all work together to come to a final Again, shout out to Anita. It's hard because we've been doing some of these exchanges in texts and phone and looking at different slides. We're not usually unclear, but, you know, I think it's been challenging and probably my fault, not hers, just want to say, she's the numbers person more so than I am and I must have misunderstood how she delineated that to me. So I want to be clear before we leave today, I think the misunderstanding of how I articulated, the technology numbers are on me, not her. I think she explained it to me and I misunderstood it and she didn't give it to me wrong. You always want to know your money person's right. So Anita is correct, I misunderstood her and so I want to be clear that that's not on her. All right? She's not here to defend herself. And I want to be clear that I think it's my error in how I explained it. So I will clean it up and make sure that you have clarity and I just want to say, I'm really enjoying budgeting with her. I can't even imagine how good she'd be if she wasn't all busted up and everything, so. She's really done a great job and has been a true partner and I just want to tell her thanks from a distance. She might be in bed, I hope she is. If not, you know, I just want to say, she's doing a great job for us as a district. And Paige and the whole team. Thank you. You made it to the end, but you have an executive session.
Would you like us to move into that?
Yes, please.
All right. I make a motion to meet an executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 3, to discuss a strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22G2, Purpose 7, which we all know is to review and approve executive session minutes from September 6, 2023.
So there's a motion, who will second?
I will second.
Very good.
And then to move into this, we have to do a roll call vote, so you just have to say your last name and then.
Moskell, yes?
Vincent, yes?
Garrett, yes.
Bachelor, yes.
Cham, Sadin, yes.
Great, we are officially in executive session.
Five, zero, zero.
Congrats.
Thank you, Westboro TV.
Thank you, Westboro TV.
Thank you, Hallie.
Hallie, thank.